Hello, it is August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. We're at a Board of Education regular meeting. It is seven P M. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Zetter.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Sjochkun.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here, five present, zero absent. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in the actions of the Board may participate during the public comments section of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the Board sign-in sheet, which is right outside on the table with Mr. Young. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Please silence your cellphone during the meeting. A copy, oh, I'm repeating myself because it's in there twice. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbins. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Zetter.
Aye.
Mr. Sjochkun.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes five-zero. Next section, comments from the public. Okay, thank you. So we're going to start off with public comments. Just per Board policy, we're going to ask that Board comments be limited to three minutes per speaker. And we will start off on the top of the list. Brian Sturgill, if you can step up and just say your name again and go for it.
Good evening, School Board. I'm Brian Sturgill. I'd like to thank you guys for letting me speak a little bit today. I'm speaking this evening as a proud parent, relative, and friend of many students and alum of the Cogah Heights School District. I'm also speaking as a staunch advocate of the safety and prosperity of this community. In recent months, a question regarding the future of the Cogah Heights district nickname and/or imagery has once again been brought up. While realizing this is a very polarizing subject, I do feel that due to the current political climate, that there is often a tendency to overreact or to focus on issues that have relatively little importance. This is because most people have no idea how to deal with real problems or find the tough solutions. So often, as in this case, individuals and groups latch onto something simple or just easy to, or easy just to impress or to say to their community, "Hey, look, I'm the champion of this social cause," blah, blah, blah. So at first I asked, is this issue really that important? Will a change promote the well-being of the school district? Will it have an effect on the Native American community? And what impact, and the impact, will it impact the issues they face, such as alcoholism, drug addiction, suicide, and missing Native American women on reservations? Unfortunately, I was unavailable to, unavailable to attend the previous town hall meeting on this issue. But I do remember thinking and hoping that the Cogah Heights Board of Education had sincere reason for making such proposed change, that the Board was not just trying to follow suit or to promote the chic cancel culture agenda. It was my exception, it was my expectation that the Board of Education would do their due diligence in researching this topic and that they would obtain and consider information and facts from both sides of the issue, not just from the activists or the interest group propaganda. That being said, after reviewing the Board of Education Business Resolution C that was placed on tonight's agenda, I was greatly disappointed and somewhat insulted. Those hopes and expectations I mentioned previously were short-lived. And I found out, I found that the, I found the Board of Education's resolution appeared to be very rushed, was absent of creative solutions or compromises, lacked any respect or concern for the community's desire to preserve any active or current traditions of the past. It lacked any sincerity and appears just to follow suit. It was overreaching. It calls for the censorship of any and all imagery of Native American influence, history, and heritage. It calls for it to be locked away in an out-of-sight, out-of-mind archive room, effectively erasing it from memory. It fails to provide any education provisions. It noticeably is one-sided and seemingly under the influence of radical Native American advocacy groups and left-leaning academic organizations. But after some thought, I decided instead of just complaining, that I would offer some suggestions. Because to gripe without solutions is pointless. So I have suggested some, from, some revisions to the current resolution, and I've provided those to the School Board tonight. I'm requesting that the, the Board of Education vote to table the current resolution as it is written and take time to, and review this matter and these suggested revisions. I'm asking that the Board of Education be open-minded, receptive to compromise, and do, do more than just go through the motions. I'm asking that the Board of Education not overreach and to remember, it is not within their purview to determine what is and is not offensive in this community. While I personally do not condemn the use of nicknamed Redskins, I am also not too obtuse to, to see that the nickname can be considered by some as divisive or non-inclusive. I do believe and know in my heart that there's nothing wrong, derogatory, insulting, or racist about the Native American imagery on this campus and in this community. Nor, to my knowledge, has it ever been used in such a manner. These images are not mascots, but rather symbols and memorials honoring the heritage and history of the indigenous people that were once members of our community. And they, like us, call the Cogah River Valley home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, some of you guys have checked no, but I'm just going to read names if that's okay, because sometimes people check the boxes and they're not sure. Jim Nobin, did you, no. Mary Snyder. Matt Rush. Sarah Phillips. Hello.
Good evening. My subject, and I will try to keep it below three minutes, is fear. Why do we fear change? There is great comfort in tradition, comfort in things that you know. When surrounded by the same people your whole life, your interests and opinions tend to align. I'm new to this community. I went to nine schools in twelve years, moving around the country and world with an Army family. I graduated and served an Army civilian side by side with soldiers for a little over eight years, and then transitioned to working at the VA to continue serving. I now work at NASA, where the number-one goal of Glenn Research Center right now is to promote diversity and inclusion. For anyone that has seen the movie Hidden Figures, or even just knows NASA culture, you will know that NASA has its roots as an institution in lacking diversity in both race and gender. Now today, because NASA has expanded their reach to encompass a global relation with partners from private industry and governments representing many countries, we're able to go back to the moon and learn how to live among stars. Becoming more compassionate and thoughtful about naming conventions is a natural evolution of the human condition. This is not cancel culture. It takes great bravery to confront change, to challenge tradition. But when you do, you find that the world offers so much more, and creativity lends to invention. Redskins is a horribly offensive name. It just is, and the logo to go with it. This is just a mascot, but to many, it is so much more. To the students, to the community. By challenging this tradition of using a name and logo that disparages an entire group of people, you're sending a message of growth and unity, and I am proud of each of you up here for considering this change. And I would actually like to let my student say something to the Board, which I appreciate. I think she might be the only one here tonight, but I think it's important not just to hear parents, but students that are going to the school right now.
Can you tell us your name?
Hi, I'm Nina Randero. So I think that this is really important because we're not Native Americans. Like, I don't think that we should be using the Redskins because we're calling us something that we're not. And I don't really think that's okay, and especially the logo, it's incredibly offensive, in my opinion. And I ask you this, what's different than calling ourselves the Black Skins or the White Skins? There is no difference. We're calling ourselves the Redskins and saying that it's okay when it's not. I understand that the Native Americans lived here, like, we're Cogah County. But I also don't think that we should base our schools off of that. Because though it is very important to show how important that really is, I think that it's not okay that we're calling ourselves that. Like, we're using our mascot as, like, a football mascot when the Native Americans suffered so much throughout history. I just don't think it's okay, and I think it needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your bravery as a student standing up and speaking at a Board meeting. You got more? Okay. Um, let me see where I, um... Sean Dekker.
I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah.
I'm going to note that. Laurel Graver. No. Pass? Okay. Phil Kiriakas.
One, one thing, Board President, before you start the clock. I want to thank Superintendent Evans and Treasurer Matt Mukio for their fast approach to getting the public records request that I requested and keeping in contact with me at all times of what was going on. Thanks to both of you. The Board of, the Board of Education Policy Manual for Cogah Heights defines a controversial issue as "a topic of which opposing points of view have been promulgated by responsible opinion and likely to arouse both support and opposition in the community." The policy manual adds that "the Board of Education believes that the consideration of controversial issues has a legitimate place and that such issues can help students learn to explore fully and fairly on all sides of an issue." If the Board of Education truly believed that the consideration of controversial issues have a legitimate place, they would have been more transparent in their actions throughout the process. For example, at the May twenty-sixth Board meeting, it was revealed for the first time that a community meeting regarding the Redskins would be held on June thirtieth. However, it was not until thirty days later, on June twenty-fifth, that the district-wide communication regarding this June thirtieth community meeting was sent out via Tom Talks. The vast majority of alumni and community members do not receive Tom Talks. Furthermore, information about the June thirtieth meeting was not posted on the district's Twitter page till the afternoon of the twenty, twenty-nine, thirty hours before the meeting. Additionally, nothing about the June thirtieth meeting was posted on the homepage of the district's website or on the district's master calendar or Google Calendar. So much for the public relations firm that the taxpayers pay three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per month for. And despite many families being able to enjoy summer travel for the first time in over a year, as well as participating in summer activities that were canceled the previous year due to COVID pandemic, this Board chose to conduct that community meeting in the middle of the summer when it should have been very evident that it would be poorly attended. The Board Policy Manual advocates that students in the district develop and utilize the important skill of fully and fairly exploring all sides of an issue. However, after reviewing a public records request with thousands of emails pertaining to this topic, it appears as if the Board did not adequately explore all sides of this issue. For example, emails from organizations and media outlets whose stance on issue is very clear were frequently forwarded by Mark Dobbins to other School Board members. Additionally, Superintendent Tom Evans consulted with an individual that has a minor, not a major, in Native American Studies, a distinction that requires only fifteen credit hours or equivalent of five classes. Based on an individual's social media post and organizational ties, it was very clear how she stands on this issue. The action taken by one of our neighboring school districts has demonstrated what it means to explore all sides of a controversial issue fully and fairly, as well as ensure that the consideration of controversial issues have a legitimate place. One of the high schools in the Palmer City School District is currently known as the Palmer Redman. The district has hosted a series of well-attended community meetings, had an online survey from community members that had twenty-one people respond, and the district is planning on having discussions with current students in the fall regarding this topic. In a recent Cleveland.com article, Palmer Superintendent Dr. Charles Smileylack summed it up perfectly when he stated, "Quite frankly, that means getting people's input, and it really shouldn't fall on one's person's shoulders or even a group of five School Board members." Why can't the Cogah Heights Board of Education not take the Palmer Schools as an example of proper ways to conduct this process?
Please finish up.
To demonstrate that Cogah Heights Board of Education truly believes in exploring all sides of a controversial, controversial issue fully and fairly, as well as ensuring that the consideration of controversies has a legitimate place in our society, is it essential that the resolution regarding the Redskins be tabled and that the president or a majority of the present members make a motion to create an ad hoc committee so that this controversial issue may be fully and fairly examined. Ad hoc committees are described in Policy zero-one-five-five for the members that have not fully read their Board Policy Manual. Thank you.
I have Mandy Epathy. Tracy Hawthorne. Sandy Sturgill. Carolyn Bajaska Gilbert. Jarrett Graver. Pete Rome. Pass. Kathleen Zink. Kathleen Zink.
I'm gonna apologize at first, because you know I normally come with her written out. 25 minutes ago, I was literally washing the supper table, and I thought, you know what, I'm gonna go show up. I wore my Cogga Heights stuff, and I realize that many of us up there have a connection to this. And I started thinking of it as the history teacher. I mean, I've been a history teacher for 38 and a half years. And I'm watching history try to be rewritten all over the place right now. And this is an easy target. The Redskins is an easy target. But as a history teacher, I also watched the talking heads, and all the experts come on TV and on radio and talk about racial this and racial that, and I listened to them talk about black-skinned people and brown-skinned people. And the term "black" and "brown skin" is used all the time by people of other opposite races, and people of the same race. I remember going to school here. I graduated in 1978. Yes, that makes me old. My mother graduated in 1952. My uncle, who died in the Korean War, fighting in a country far, far away, walked in the halls of this building the day it opened for his kindergarten class. Nope, sorry, I think it was first grade. I think he went to kindergarten at the Valley View Town Hall. First grade. My siblings have gone here, my children have gone here, my grandchildren now go here. And I will stand here with this and tell you how proud I am to have the term Redskins and the emblem. Very proud. It's not disrespectful. I remember talking about the term "Cuyahoga", being an Indian term, and our teachers talking about the Indian tribes that lived down in Valley View. All a sense of pride and history. I laugh when I think that you have a school, where my husband's from, although he didn't go to the school, the Findlay Trojans. I don't know about you, but my main thought is, if I'm a kid in that high school, I'm thinking condoms. Because that's how people think now. Everything has to be controversial. It doesn't have to be controversial. There can be a sense of pride and love for what history has, and respect for history. No one's saying that for the Native Americans, for the indigenous people of this area, it wasn't difficult. But we've grasped onto it and said it's a good thing to recognize what those people stood for when they fought across this land. It's not something to be demeaned. It's something to be respected. And to respect an emblem that is not derogatory, I'm sorry to say that we, as a community, are caving. And I hope we don't. I hope we can grasp onto the betterment. Because I've watched now Columbus Day be thrown away. Heck, if Christopher Columbus hadn't gotten here, somebody else would have. I'm good. Thank you all for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And then I have Brian, I'm not sure how to say your last name, Brian. Fergua? Frawa? I would not have gotten that right.
How you doing? My name's Brian Frawa. Geez, sounds like a W. I am a patrolman here for the Village of Cuyahoga Heights, and I just want to express my opinion. I think it's good to see both sides, and also hear from a side, because I am half Native American. I am Pueblo Indian. It's from New Mexico, it's on my dad's side. And I am also half Polish. I do not agree with changing the term Redskins. It isn't a matter of opinion, I think, you know? There are some Native Americans that I know that do think the term Redskins might be racist. I am a fan of the Cleveland Indians, so is my grandmother, my grandfather, my dad. We are all proud. I did become, I am an alumni of Palmer Senior High School. I'm a proud Redman. And, you know, when I hear something like this, I get more worried that, like, changes like this will end up ruining the history, throwing it in an archive, you know? I read the resolution. There are problems with it. First off, the term "Indian", you know, for over 500 years, we've known that there are Indian people from India that are offended by the word "Indian". You know, it is, term is Native American or American Indian. So, you know, it's just the education on it, you know? Be educated on what you're trying to get rid of is gonna be really important, you know, to think about. It can't be something that's quick. You know, I know Sturgill, Chief Sturgill, had some thoughts on it too, about thinking about going about changing this, if that's what you plan on trying to do. But, from my opinion, like I said, from a Native American, you know, I do not agree with the changes. I do like the term Redskins. I am proud to be a policeman here. I'm proud to watch the teams play and see the Redskins, you know, from all the fans here, all the residents, they cheer it on. It's a prideful term. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have for public comments. Next up, Item 4, Treasures Business, Mr. Ruchio.
Thank you, Mrs. Schuchert. Couple items tonight for approval. First one is 4A, Motion to Approve the Minutes of the August 11th, 2021 Regular Meeting, as found in Attachment T1. Item 5A, Motion to Accept the Attached List of Donations Received Through August 18th, 2021, as found in Attachment T2. And 5B, Motion to Approve New Vendors to the School District, per W9's attached, as found in Attachment T3. And 5C, Motion to Approve Purchase Orders Over 5,000, as found in Attachment T4. And Item 5D, Motion to Approve the Following Fund-to-Fund Advances: Advances out temporarily reallocate cash from and to another fund with an expectation of repayment. May I ask for those motions for approval tonight?
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the Treasures Business Consent Agenda Motion? Moved by Mrs. Edder?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Suchak. You discuss it.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base on a couple of these. 5A, the donations received. We had two. One was from Lynn August, and that's to the Stuff the Bus account, $75. And Laura Bachi, to the Bachi Scholarship Donation, $50. We want to thank both of them, and we have thank you letters that are attached to the agenda. So thank you to both of them for their donation tonight.
Lynn August's donation was in the name of Wayne Clivenger, who passed away last year.
Item 5B is new vendors to the school district. We have two tonight. We have Oberlin Food Hub for cafeteria fruit and vegetable purchases, and we have Product Recovery Management, that is for pool filtration parts. Nothing too significant. Item 5C is purchase orders over 5,000. We have three tonight. The first one is Oberlin Food Hub. This is for the fresh foods and produce. And the Food Service Fund, $6,000. Number two is OSBA. This is for our Board Docs license for the 2021-22 school year. The amount is $10,600. Board Docs is what we use for our meetings that we have here. This entire software is that. And number three is for the Auditor of State's Office. It's our Fiscal 21 GAAP. We signed a three-year contract. We're near three of our GAAP. What takes place with the GAAP is the auditors perform our financial statements for us, and they do a cursory audit with that. And we're required to submit those too, so that's $8,000. And the last item I have, 5D, is the motion to return the advances that we approved in Fiscal 21. We're now in Fiscal 22. We have four that we did back in 2021's fiscal year. 1,000, 12,000, 10,000, 5,000. The reason we did these, and they're all to 500-level federal grant funds that we have. When we spend our federal grant funds, we spend the money first, and then we ask for reimbursement after the fact. For presentation purposes, once we close the fiscal year on our financial statements, we have to show a positive balance in those funds. Therefore, since we can't request, due to the state cutting off at a certain point in time, because they have to close their fiscal year, we can't request those funds that we spend, we have to advance from our general fund to these federal grant funds, a small amount that we had expended, just to show a positive balance in those funds. So right now, in Fiscal 22, we are returning those advances that we had advanced from the general fund. So it's just a reversal of the entry. Any other items I have for recommendations tonight? I'll send you any questions.
Okay, hearing done, roll call.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Mr. Suchak?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbin?
Aye.
Mr. Namath?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuchert?
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Next up, Treasures Discussions.
Yep, just had one item I wanted to talk about. Our ESER III application. So at our June 9th, 2021 board meeting, we accepted the ESER III grant. So ESER III was enacted March 11th, 2021. It was the third round of stimulus money that came to school districts. There was an ESER I, ESER II, and this is now ESER III. Our amount for ESER III is $649,994.07. ESER III funds may be used for allowable expenses from March 13th, 2020 until September 30th, 2024. The general purpose of ESER III funds is to provide funding to address learning loss, as well as the reopening and operation of schools in a way that maintains the health and safety of students, educators, and staff. At least 20% of these funds must address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions. Our plan for ESER III funds is $370,000 to fund two additional elementary school teachers that were hired with our ESER II grant for the 2022-23, 23-24 school year, and our new MTSS Transition Specialist position for two school years, the 22-23 and 23-24. And that's $370,000 that we're looking at. The rest of the money, $279,994.07, is to fund HVAC permanent improvements in the elementary school. So we're looking at improvements to approximately seven classrooms to take place over the summer of 2022, to work on air conditioning primarily with those funds.
Can I ask, have we already, like, booked them, or, like, that company, or where? How does that work?
No, the engineer will be in to talk to us. That would have to be board-approved by you. This is the first step in that, getting the ESER funds approved. And then, we would bring the proposal for that to the board, for the board to approve, and then we would sign the contract with the, with the firm, and try to make sure that we're first on the docket when school lets out next spring.
Yeah, our ESER III application, which is due to ODE by Friday, August 20th, was submitted Monday, August 16th. So we were still hiring out the last details of it. So we have the list in what's called a safe account in the CCIP application that ODE has, our plan to use these funds. So in advance, we have to set the allowable expenditures that we're, you know, looking to assign it. And ODE has a method of different object codes that we have to code the entire budget through. So we're looking, this is our plan in which to spend these funds. We still have to get approval from ODE that these are allowed in our safe account, the CCIP application. Once we have that approval from ODE for our ESER III funds, then we're able to go out and start bringing forward to the Board of Education all the information that we have.
Are we expecting it'll be a while to get the approval from the state?
The state just told us this week that they are slow in approving the ESER funds right now. That we just got a memo from ODE saying that they're backlog right now with the ESER approvals. So be patient.
And I'll just say this, there are approximately 600 school districts in the state of Ohio. Our ESER II, which we revised, I want to say, a couple months ago, maybe two, was just approved last week. So they're just getting to ESER II's. I envision ESER III's are gonna be, like Mr. Evans is saying, a bit down the road from where we're at, so.
Just so it could, I mean, realistically, it might not be done next summer.
We're gonna have everything aligned. We're gonna start work with the engineer, and Gardner's already been in discussions with us. They're the ones that did the code for us. We're gonna have all that on paper. We'll present it to the board, so you know exactly what that plan is. And then, once we get the stamp from the state, then we can go ahead and lock it in. And Gardner's well aware of what the process is. They're, they're doing a lot of the districts throughout the state of Ohio.
It's possible, but unlikely, though. ODE knows that all the school districts need to have approval to move forward with our ESER III funds, so they need to, they understand that there's a need to expedite it on their side. There's just a backlog. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, next up, Superintendent's Business.
Okay. Superintendent's Business General, A, Motion to Approve Request for the Rental of Ralph P. Adams Stadium from Trinity High School for Events to be held on August 21st, September 11th, September 24th, or 25th, and October 23rd. B, Motion to Grant the Authority of the Superintendent to Enter into Contracts for the Purposes of Student Activities for 2021-22 School Year. C, Motion to Accept Attached Memorandum of Understanding Between Chase and the District's Board of Education Regarding the Definition of Tuition-Free Education of Children of Non-Resident Employees for the School Year. D, Motion to Approve All Chat and ESC Instructional Staff to be Approved as Intervention Assistance Team Members on an As-Needed Basis from August 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2022, at the rate of .00075 of the BA Base Salary Per Hour. 9, Staff Resignations. Motion to Accept the Resignation of Anthony Edder as Assistant Cross-Country Coach. 10, Business Employment Certified Staff. Motion to Approve a Change in Classification Schedule for Daris Gibson to Move from Custodian III to Traigment II. Employment Classified Staff. Motion to Approve the Employment of Molly Clay as a Middle School/High School Teacher Assistant for the Adopted Salary Schedule Step 1 on a 1-Year Limited Contract for 2021-22 School Year, contingent upon Satisfactory Completion of BCI/FBI Check and Proper Certification. 12, Supplemental Positions. Motion to Approve the Employment of Yelixa Rodriguez and Pam Mead as Ticket Takers for 2021-22 School Year, contingent upon sufficient number of student athletes sufficient funding and upon successful completion of BCI/FBI Background Checks. 9, Employment of Bryce Harwood as Assistant Cross-Country Coach. Motion to Approve the Employment of Bryce Harwood as an Assistant Cross-Country Coach for 2021-22 School Year, contingent upon sufficient number of student athletes funding, BCI/FBI Background Checks. C, Employment of Brian Voight as Elementary School Science Olympiad Advisor. Motion to Approve Brian as the Olympiad Advisor for 21-22 School Year, again, contingent upon sufficient number of students funding and successful completion of BCI/FBI Background Checks. Section 13, Business Employment Substitute and Volunteers. Motion to Approve the Temporary Reassignment of Brian Voight to the Position of Elementary School Long-Term Substitute Teacher effective August 23rd at BA Step 1 until the end of the 21-22 Assignment. Upon completion of the Assignment, Mr. Voight will return to his current role as a Teacher Assistant at the Cogga Heights Elementary School. Agreements, Contracts, and Membership. Motion to Approve the Agreement with Summit Educational Service Center, Governing Body for Professional Development Services for 2021-22, at a cost not to exceed $7,067.50 to be paid with Title II Grant Funds for the attached document. B, Motion to Approve a Special Education Agreement not to exceed $38,500 with Mentor City Schools Cares Program, effective August 24th, 2021 to June 2nd, 2022. C, Motion to Approve Agreement Purchase Order with Belfair JBC Monarch School for Providing Special Education-Related Services to Qualified Students who Reside in the Cogga Heights School District for 2021-22 School Year at a Cost of $156,444.60. D, Motion Agreement, Motion to Approve Agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for Providing Audiology Services for Students Residing in Cogga Heights School District for 2021-22 School Year at a Cost not to Exceed $6,000. E, Motion to Approve Agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for Providing Visual Services for Students Residing in the Cogga Heights School District for 2021-22 School Year not to Exceed $1,500. F, Motion to Approve the Attached Community Use of Facilities Application Form, Regulations, and Rental Fees as Revised. G, Motion to Authorize Payment to Selected OHSAA Playoff Workers for Sectional District Soccer, Soccer Finals, Regional Football, Sectional Basketball Games, Regional Wrestling Matches, and Non-CHS Events Held During the 21-22 School Year According to the Attached Pay Rate Schedule. Payments will not exceed the flat fee amount allotted to CHS for Hosting Playoff Games, and the District Funds will not be used to pay the assigned workers. H, Motion to Approve Attached Athletic Event Fee Schedule for 21-22. I, Motion to Approve the Preferred Vendor Agreement to Participate in the Ohio School Council Group Purchasing Organization for General Food Essentials Award with Gordon Food Service Incorporated for the 21-22 School Year. 3, Motion to Approve an Agreement with Agile Sports Technologies for Huddle Services and Camera for All Sports for 21-22 School Year. K, Motion to Adopt a Memorandum of Understanding between the Board of Education and Cogga Heights Association of Teachers, Adding a Growth Hormone Prescription Drug. L, Motion to Adopt a Memorandum of Understanding with the Cogga Heights Board of Education and Cogga Heights Association of Support Employees for Adding a Growth Hormone Prescription Drug. and Cog Heights Association of Support Employees for adding a growth hormone prescription drug. H, motion to approve a correction to the updated administrative supervisory and exempt classified employee schedule benefits as recommended, effective for the twenty, twenty-one school year. This was originally approved by the board in June ninth, two thousand twenty-one. And motion to approve the inter-district agreement along Cog High Schools to reimburse the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for extended school year services provided by Kelly Cummins, and seventh-class services provided by Laura Butner during the two-hundred, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year for the attached agreement. I ask that those items be approved.
Well done, lots of reading. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's business consent agenda motions?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Etter, discussion.
As quickly as possible here, just to, uh, the rental agreement, it's for Trinity to host some football games, this is a one-year trial. They, they were here last Saturday night, things apparently went pretty well, and, um, motion for me to be able to sign contracts. I'll still bring those contracts to the board, but these are for like a prom venue, DJs that hit, uh, senior luncheon that we have to sign a contract with as a district. It generally sometimes can't wait till the board meeting gets here because those places are kind of anxious to get the contract back. I, they, I can sign those and then bring them to the board to make sure that you're well aware of that. But that's all, only student activity funds, that's not anything beyond that. The employee tuition determination, that was to clean up some language from the contract negotiations. Anthony not able to serve as a cross-country coach. Daris, we talked about that previously, moving from custodian three to tradesman two. Molly Clay, Molly did an outstanding job for us at the offsite learning centers last year. We, we had an opening for a teacher assistant, she'll be primarily assigned to the library here. Molly does a great, has done a great job for us. Elixia and Pam as ticket takers on an as-needed basis. Bryce Harwood, a former standout cross-country kid for us, gonna come back and help with the cross-country team. We've got good numbers, we could need an assistant coach. Brian Voight, one of our new teachers assistants, gonna handle science Olympiad in the elementary building. He's also moving from a teaching assistant position to a long-term sub position for the year, and that's in regards to the employee that has an ongoing health issues in the elementary building. Educational Service Center for Professional Development in Summit County, that's Title II funds that, that will be spent there for, for PD for the teachers. Mentor City Schools Cares Program, there's, we have one student at Mentor in their program, Belfair, we have two students there. All three of those students are either juniors or seniors, so kind of getting near the end of their time with Cog High Schools. That, as I previously mentioned, when we opened our resource rooms, we didn't force anybody to come back to our resource rooms. Don't know that we'd be able to service the autistic students anyhow. Monarch does an outstanding job of that. ESC for audiology services on an as-needed basis, and the same with visual service on an as-needed basis. The, the school community use of facilities, if people want to rent the gym or rent the pool, are standard. We haven't changed the rates on that at all, moving forward. The pay rates for OHSA, OHSA sets the rates of what we can pay scorekeepers and table workers, and, and that's different in some cases than our rates, and, and that's just money in, money out through the OHSA on our end of it. The athletic event fee schedule, those, that's what we charge for different events. If they, if people want to come to the Cog Relays, it has the fee there. For the, for the Alpina Wrestling Invitational, it's got the fee there, so that's what we charge schools to come. And then there are the tournaments here. Event agreement with the Ohio Schools Council for the General Foods. That's, as, Ohio Schools Council is a consortium, and that's a group purchasing price for us with, with OSC. Agile Sports Technologies for the huddle services, those are the cameras that we livestream from. People can sign into the website and see the livestream of the games, that's for the huddle services. The two memorandums with chat and chase are in reference to a, a growth hormone that is part of our medical plan but not part of our, our prescription plan. The cost of that will be picked up by everybody that's on the plan. Correction to the administrative supervisory, it, it had the, it listed by the days instead of the number of days for the contract instead of the administrative contract, so that's a correction to that, that applies to the administrators. And the inter-district agreement, this is to reimburse that ESC. Our, our research room teacher actually teaches a seventh class, so she doesn't have a, so we, that, there's an overload pay involved in that. And Kelly Cummins had done some additional summer services for us. So they get paid through the ESC, we reimburse the ESC back for that. So those are the items that I have for approval this evening.
I just wanted to go back to the one, the very first one, sorry, you were on a good roll, so I don't want to interrupt you. On the rental of the facility, to make sure that when another school or whoever is renting any of our facilities, this one example was with Trinity, that our district will assume no additional costs.
That's part of it.
They, they'll pick up all the auxiliary costs that are involved in not just renting the facility, but having the event go on.
Right, and if you look, it has the fees broken down. We have the, the police fees, the EMS fees, we have an onsite faculty manager fee. There's a, in, in the end, we're gonna, I, I think we're gonna net somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars with this agreement with Trinity. Trinity previously used Bedford Stadium, I think we came in a little bit less than what Bedford has charged them in the past.
And the concession stands?
Concession stand stays with us, our boosters run the concession stand.
And even at one of their events, this, so we would still read through?
We, the proceeds stay here with us.
Okay, good.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Suchack.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. Superintendent's comments.
Just a little, a week into school, trying to beat the heat. I know some people were calling for a heat day yesterday, open house was last night, and it, by last evening, it's pretty hot in the building. Quite honestly, the elementary building, we had at least a temporary air conditioner in every classroom. Obviously, the gym is not air-conditioned, some of the cafeteria, some of the open areas. All of our middle school classrooms, as of Friday, had at least some sort of air conditioning in them. And the high school teachers have done a really good job of, those teachers that have air conditioning, list their open periods to allow some of the teachers, the north end of the, the building here is brutal. So some of those teachers go over and use some of the science rooms and the math rooms on the third floor that have air conditioning. So we're not melting anybody away and able to stay in session at this time.
Thank you. Next up, board business resolutions. A, motion to approve attendance for a flat fee of nineteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for the following individuals at the OSBA Capital Conference to be held on November seventh through ninth, twenty twenty-one in Columbus. Board members Mark Dobbins, Maria Etter, Joe Naaman, Lindy Schukert, Gary Suchacki, and administrators Tom Evans and Matt Muccio. Item B, we need to talk about, because we don't have any delegates, so maybe I read it. Motion to approve appointment of the following delegates for the annual OSBA meeting of the OSBA delegate assembly to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-one in Columbus. Anyone want to be the delegate, so we could add your name in?
I haven't done it for a while.
All right, Gary, you're it. Gary's, Gary's the delegate, who wants to be the alternate?
I didn't say I wanted to be, I just said I haven't done it for a while.
You, you offered.
No, you can put my name down.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, everyone okay, okay, so we'll add that to the motion. The delegate will be Gary Suchacki, and the alternate will be Mark Dobbins.
Two of the OSBA, we will be presenting at one of the sessions on the, on the best committee. We are also the sponsor of the Allison Rose Foundation, will be presenting at OSBA. We're the sponsors of that presentation, so we'll have somebody in the room, and as Mike and, and Jamie's in the back there, come down and do a presentation for the Ohio School Boards Association. And the Scarlet Angels are scheduled to sing also at OSBA, so we got a music group into the student achievement part of it this year.
Excellent, happy to see that finally.
That's actually been trying for several years.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the motions.
Thanks to Reno Conapelli for helping us on that end.
Those were the two motions, so can I have a motion to approve those two items, the board business consent agenda motions?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Etter.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Discussion on those items? I, I would just say the only discussion I would have is maybe we open up the invite to Stephanie Prowse. Um, board member that, because there's only three people.
Absolutely.
All right, roll call please.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. Next up, item number nineteen. Motion to approve the following resolution. I just have to enlarge it on my screen, I forgot my reading glasses. Okay, resolution to retire the Cog Heights High School redskin mascot. Whereas Cog Heights High School mascot has been the redskin coupled with an image of an Indian, Indian head since the early nineteen forties, and where I, whereas, when originally adopted, the mascot was meant to honor the strength, courage, and pride of Native Americans. And whereas it is now widely recognized that the term redskin is a pejorative slur that may be considered disrespectful to Native American people. And whereas the Cog Heights local schools are an outstanding district with caring people in our communities, and a place where every child deserves to be treated equally. And whereas the Cog Heights redskin mascot is at odds with that desired culture, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Cog Heights Local School District, one, the Cog Heights High School Redskins mascot is hereby forever retired and henceforth shall not be associated with the Cog Heights Local School District. And two, the redskin name and the Indian head, Indian image will be removed from all surfaces and athletic uniforms through the regular replacement rotation as soon as possible, except for those images that are included in the historical timeline publications and alumni archive room, so that students can learn from history rather than ignore it. And item three, the board will continue efforts to find an appropriate new nickname and mascot so that an inclusive and non-controversial nickname and imagery, imagery can be developed. Can I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Suchacki.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbins. And the roll call being called upon the question of passage, the vote was, why am I reading that part? Okay, so I don't, yeah, okay, so roll call please. Discussion, sorry.
I know this is a very controversial issue in general, but I, the chief, chief, Chief Sturgill has made a couple of comments here, and I agree with a major point in that I think we would be better served to take the term Indian out and replace it with Native American wherever it appears in the document. And I just wanted to ask if my fellow board members felt that that wasn't a reasonable thing to do.
I, I would agree with that.
The Indian head.
Well, yeah, I mean, wherever the term Indian appears, replace it with the term Native American.
I would agree with that. I agree with that.
You think, okay, what we'd have to do, of course, is vote independently on that change, independent from the rest of the resolution, I believe.
Do you want me just to reread it with?
Is that the right way to do it, or we just vote on an amendment?
Motion to amend the resolution to replace, as you stated, if it's a motion to amend the motion, then you would vote on the amendment first.
Right, so vote on that amendment, so I would suggest that we make that amendment.
I would second it, is that, if it's a motion on the table, I'll second it.
That would be the right way to do it, and then you would call for a rule.
Call for a rule on the amendment.
This is a roll call on the amendment.
To replace.
To replace Indian.
Indian with Native American.
Throughout the document or throughout the resolution.
Throughout the brand.
Okay.
Mr. Suchacki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. So that is replaced, Native American will replace everywhere where it says Indian.
In the resolution.
Okay, and so we're still on discussion.
I do have one question, I mean, I'm separating these on purpose. And the, another suggestion was that perjorative slur be replaced with divisive and non-inclusive. I don't know if that, I just, it struck me as a possible thing we might want to consider. I don't feel as strongly about that as I did about the first one. But I just wanted to throw it out on the table and see if it strikes anybody else as a reasonable change or if we should stay with what's originally in the document. Just wanted to open some discussion on it, not really making a motion at this point. If anyone would like to discuss it, if not, it's okay, we'll move on.
I'm okay supporting that, that, that change, because I think it still is indicative of the motion's indication that, that the term redskin is, is not a favorable term.
Yeah.
Relative to, to Native Amer, well, it's not a favorable term.
Right, it's still saying this is a bad thing.
Right.
But I think divisive and non-inclusive, I don't know. Now that I read the non-inclusive part, I, maybe I don't want to do that, maybe I want to leave it the way it is.
I like the way that it is.
You'd rather leave it the way it is? I'm okay with it the way it is. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I, I think, I think the original way it's written.
Okay, all right, all right, that's fine, no motion.
Did you have more discussion, though?
I don't have any more discussion personally.
On this. And any other discussion?
Yes, so I have some comments that I'd like to offer, and before I do, I just want to preface them by saying that these are my comments and that they are not to be attributed to the entire board, and that's consistent with the board's policy. I, I think that some of the comments I'm going to make, I hope, are somewhat responsive to some of the comments that are made this evening. So in that sense, I hope they add some value to the, to the, to the meeting. Firstly, the board held a special meeting on June thirtieth to gather community input on retaining or retiring the district's current redskin mascot. I thanked all who participated in that meeting and offered preliminary comments. The passion surrounding this issue was and is apparent, and I thank everyone for maintaining their composure while sharing their views on this important topic. I'm very pleased to represent a district whose residents set a good example for their students, and in doing so have generated positive impressions of our district. Comments received at the June thirty meeting and afterwards have given me valuable insights into the community's thoughts on this subject. I appreciate hearing from representative sections of our communities, both supporting and opposing views, and I've strived to maintain and keep an open mind. Several commenters suggested that if a change were to occur, that the renaming process include broad community and student participation. That would be a positive outcome in my view. I reviewed my notes from the June thirty meeting today and noted that the number of commenters who expressed support for a mascot change was fairly even with those who preferred retention. I hope that this observation and the fact that this board held a special meeting for the sole purpose of gathering public views on its mascot are responsive to concerns that I received yesterday by email from an alumnus and resident who suggested that the board was planning to vote on a mascot change without polling district residents. I believe that more than a dozen people attended the special meeting in person, and many more attended or viewed by way of Zoom or YouTube. I have no reason to believe at this point that further polling of the community on this issue would reach a different conclusion. That it's roughly half support change and roughly half do not. That has been the result of comments received over the last two days, including those this evening. They've been more negative this evening, but I've received comments by way of email that were more supportive. So again, I think we're at a fifty-fifty situation. Before I cast my vote, I'd like to discuss the views of those seeking to retain the current mascot. Comments supporting retention of the mascot seem to focus on three main arguments, and I'm taking this back to the June thirty special meeting. The three main arguments are, number one, retaining the current mascot would preserve local tradition and a strong history of community pride and support for the school. Two, former district leaders who adopted the current mascot were well-intentioned, and therefore the current mascot standards should not be retroactively applied against well-intentioned original actions of the district. And three, some residents who are or may be related to persons of Native American ancestry state that their Native American relatives are highly supportive of this school's mascot, and therefore it should be retained. With respect to the first argument, if the district retires its current mascot, there would be no change to the school's prior history. Those who proudly claim their status as forever Redskins would retain that status. I also note to this point that the draft resolution exempts, quote, "images included in historical timeline publications and alumni archive room," close quote. Thus, the proposed change is entirely forward-looking and would only affect current and future CHS students. With respect to the second supporting argument, I believe that the district's founders, who adopted the mascot, did so with great respect and admiration for the area's Native American roots. However, much has changed in the eighty-plus years since the district opened its doors. For example, the, well, for example, at, in nineteen thirty-nine, when the, when the school first had its first graduating class, we as a nation were still two years away from entering the Second World War, and that was a war in which many of our parents, grandparents, and even some great-grandparents fought. And a needed, a leading Native American rights advocacy organization, the National Council of American Indians, or NCAI, wouldn't be established for another five years until 1944. With respect to the third argument, I ask that any responsible Native American rights organization contact this board and offer support for our mascot's retention. If an organization were to offer its support for our current mascot, I would ask that that organization justify why the NCAA, the National Education Association, the American Psychology Association, and at least five states should be ignored, given the laws, decisions, and recommendations that discourage or prohibit the use of Native American mascots. I also note that within the last month, or past month, a resolution was introduced in the Ohio Legislature that calls on school districts to retire the use of Native American mascots. To date, however, no Native American rights organization has approached me and advocated for the continuation of the district's current mascot. To the contrary, a large Native American rights organization, the NCAI, has frequently and consistently advocated for this district and others using Native American mascots to retire them. I'd be pleased to forward the NCAI's previous press releases and emails on this subject to those who may be interested. Finally, another commenter suggested the statistics that I offered at the June 30 meeting understated the number of Ohio schools that use Native American mascots. To be clear, I offered statistics regarding usage of our district's mascot, Redskins or Redskins, at the national and state level. I did not offer statistics about the use of other Native American mascots, Indians, Braves, Chiefs, et cetera, in part because I wanted our discussion to focus on our district's mascot. I stand by those statistics as compiled by the NCAI and note that the OHSAA's stats are within one of the NCAI's regarding the number of Ohio schools that use a redskin mascot. I offered an analogy at the board's August 2019 meeting that still seems relevant today. At that time, our district had begun planning to renovate and upgrade its 60-plus and 80-plus year old buildings, but the pandemic struck. Part of that planning included a comprehensive facilities assessment survey. A major conclusion of that survey is that the district's buildings were constructed in accordance with, probably in excess of, buildings, in excess of, building standards that were then in effect. However, the assessment document indicates that many of the building's basic systems and controls are no longer, no longer reflect current standards and may need to be replaced or updated. In a similar vein, voices within the district and external voices are telling us that standards for school mascots and images have changed. Just as standards for this district's buildings have changed, standards concerning the use of Native American mascots have also changed and we must adapt to the new standards. For these reasons, I support the resolution to retire our current mascot. We must look to the future and continue to support our mission statement, which reads in part, "The mission of the Cogga Heights schools is to provide a safe, secure, and nurturing learning environment that graduates students who are college and career-ready, are critical thinkers, are culturally aware, and are prepared to be successful citizens of the 21st century." Thank you.
Thank you. As well said. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Sjuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sjuckert.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. Next up, possible board discussion and comments. Anything for future meetings?
We're over redskins!
Are we going to have any, just to hear what's coming up in September, any presentations?
Students of the Month in September.
Mr. Young, will you be drawing numbers at us?
Um, at the work session in September. State testing data.
Okay.
I, I had something else and I can't remember what it was. Right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Going to challenge Mr. Muccio on the spreadsheet.
Um, where am I? Oh, wait. I, I intertwined them or I flipped them. So that would be a possible future item.
That's going to be the work session in, in September will be the, the testing result.
Okay. So board discussion comments. Mr. Naaman, I'll start with you as I always do.
No, actually, it's, it's great to have the kids back in school and, and, you know, through the first weeks and everything, I think it's been pretty successful. And so, you know, congratulations to that, everybody moving forward. And also to the athletic teams too, in, in their fall seasons. So good luck to all them. That's it.
Mrs. Etter.
Really didn't have anything to say, but welcome back to all our students and staff. I hope everyone has, everyone has a good year. Sorry that it's so warm when they start this school year, but I guess that always happens, doesn't it? And, um, in regards to the mascot and the name change, you know, we had discussed and maybe this needed to be brought, brought up even more, that moving forward, that there is a community involvement, a student involvement, all stakeholders involved in the renaming and the image of the, of the school as we go forward. And I think we might have missed over that in our discussion and I just wanted to bring that up.
We'll discuss that at the work session. Mr. Jantovic had some outstanding suggestions today about how to perceive that. So we'll, we'll present some of that to the board.
So that's a future item.
You know, in, in regards to also looking at history and retaining the history and retaining the past, but also what that means for the future.
I have just one more comment too. I mean, I think that's the key point, is that, is that the, that we're not removing history. We're not removing the accomplishments of, of the alumni. We're not, you know, the records that remain. That's all intact. This is not canceling any history or records or those types of things. And I think that that's the important point, you know? The name Cogga Heights is what really matters. That, when you walk out of this building, you know, it's branded as, as Cogga Heights schools. You know, you're going to walk out of here as, as a Cogga Heights graduate and that's something that we should be proud of. That's the main thing, so.
Well said.
Mr. Sjuckert, you're up.
Yes, as I commented back in that June meeting, changing a mascot is emotional, but it's only the mascot, right? Like I, I referred to at the time, for those of you who may not have been here, my high school doesn't exist anymore. The building's been torn down.
My Yomethi school's gone too.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean that what I learned there and what I, the person that I am has changed because that's gone. Oh, here, the school is still here, the building, the buildings from 1938 are all still here. We're just changing the mascot. Everything else stays the same, so. Now the remarks that I was planning to make. Cogga Valley Career Center opened today. Similar to, to, they're following the same procedures that we are here. Masking encouraged, but not required. I, I think the percentages are similar to what we have here from what I've heard. This is the 50th anniversary of the Career Center. So we kicked it off on Monday with their annual meeting, you know, breakfast meeting followed by all of the other typical get-togethers and, and discussions that, that the staff has. I was able to attend that. So they're, they're all, you know, looking forward to another good year. I do have pictures if anyone wants to see them. I forgot to send email them to you, I apologize, of the remodeling that's been taking place, the changes in the infrastructure. This year's work is done. So we combined, it was a four-year plan, years two and three have been combined, they were this year. So we are still moving forward on that, essentially replacing all of the glass block that's starting to leak and to make it more consistent with the addition that was added about 20 years ago, replacing it with panels and so on, and adding insulation and, and that kind of thing. So that, that is continuing to proceed on, on schedule. And that's about all I have. Our next meeting is tomorrow night, so maybe at our next meeting I have more of an update, or more updates, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Yes, so I had a chance, or not a chance, but I talked to Mr. Evans and Mrs. Houche in the elementary school yesterday. We had a very helpful and informative meeting for me and most of the meeting focused on the masking policies and practices within the elementary school. In, in that light, it's my understanding that the FDA has not yet authorized any COVID vaccines for children under 12 and that that creates a, an impact on that student population and the staff. So with that in mind, I'd, I'd encourage the parents with CHS, CHES students to ask their children to try and wear a mask. I understand that the, the heat has just been oppressive and some, it's been very, very difficult and challenging. So I'm, I'm certainly mindful of that. But I would just hope that the, that the elementary school children in particular could, could continue wearing masks or would have the encouragement to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. A lot of times when you go last, you guys have made all the comments I've thinking and want to say. But I'm just, I feel very fortunate that the leadership in this school district is leading by supporting the mission statement, not only by our words, but by our actions. And, and I'm, I'm glad to be part of that. And then I, I just want to add too, like, I find it so sad that this is how we get media coverage. And I'm sad that he like left with his camera, but we do so many wonderful things. One of the only schools to have graduation two years ago amidst the pandemic because we worked hard to, you know, Mr. Evans really, he worked hard and, and his administrative team to, to find a way to make it happen. You know, we sat out there sweating bullets in July to make it happen for our kids. The girls softball team, you know, and, and their, their drive through the whole state championship. It's sad that we can't get coverage, but for something like this, they're, they're here in an instant and that's just sad. Sad, sad state of affairs. That's all I've got. And welcome, what was that?
That was quite intuitive, thank you.
Hey, thanks, sometimes I can do that.
A lot of activities are up and running and I think right now, all of our athletics are undefeated.
You better knock on wood.
Both football teams, both varsity JV football teams won and boy soccer won seven to nothing last night. So as of, as of tonight, what's that? The volleyball team won last night, Mrs. Mason's first win as a head coach. I told her make sure she keeps the game ball from there, I'll buy it for her. Oh. Petey has a brin' at my parade.
What about middle school football, how'd they do?
So we're off, off to a great start. A lot of students participating, lots of, lots of activities and we're looking to, if we cool off a little bit, get some things going with the elementary students too. Still looking forward to the reinstatement of some activity buses as we get into late September, October, so those elementary students can stay after school and participate in the Science Olympiad, some of those things that we, we mentioned here. And even for our middle school kids, where transportation's difficult to, to provide those things. So we can ramp some things up there, so. And we're monitoring the numbers every day. I'm in touch with the school nurse and the, and the county health department daily, as well as a chain of about five superintendents that are around us just to see what's going on in everybody's district, so.
Thank you. Item 22, it should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they've had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming regular meetings will be held somewhere in our district.
Battery.
In Battery Media Center unless you hear otherwise, 7:00 PM, September 8th, September 22nd, October 6th, and October 20th. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbins, any discussion? Hearing none. We are adjourned, it's 8:10 PM. We are adjourned.